We'll get it figured out. We're gonna go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the Oakdale City Council, March 12, 2024. Sarah, will you take the roll?
Councilmember Herr.
Here.
Councilmember Ingebretson.
Here.
Councilmember Morecambe.
Here.
Councilmember Willenbring.
Here.
Mayor Zabel.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Councilmembers in front of us, we have a slightly amended agenda. We're dropping one of the consensus items. Question for city minister Volkers, does the item under... Which one am I looking for? Twin Cities Towing, does that include the... Does that reflect the updated language?
It does not. That motion will have to be made during that time.
Okay. Where is that on here even? Oh, there we go. Community development, okay. So councilmembers, we'll just deal with the amended agenda. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion a second, final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the agenda is adopted. Next up, we have approval of the minutes. Three sets in front of us tonight. First up, meeting minutes from the workshop, February 13, 2024. Councilmembers, are there any changes or corrections? Can I have a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion a second, final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and those minutes are adopted. Next up, we have regular meeting minutes, February 13, 2024. Councilmembers, any changes or corrections? I'll look for motion.
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion a second, final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and those minutes are approved as well. Next up, we have workshop meeting minutes from February 27, 2024. Councilmembers, any changes or corrections? I'll look for motion.
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion a second, final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and those minutes are approved as well. Next up on our agenda is public hearings. We don't have any scheduled for tonight, so we'll keep things rolling right into open forum. Open forum is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to step up to the podium, share whatever is on your mind. House rules for open forum, whoops, I'm sorry. Ask you to keep your comments roughly to three minutes. It's also typically not an interactive conversation with the council. If council feels like there's something that warrants follow-up, we will direct it to our city administrator. But anybody, please feel free to step up and start with your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Dan Zimlich. I'm with 7532 31st Street, Annis Grove. Last time I was here, we talked about Annis Grove, how mad Annis Grove was about that apartment being built behind us without no one telling us, because originally for business. A lot of us are disgusted seeing that apartment behind us. I have a solution that might make a lot of people happy temporarily. Right on the other side of the road, there is a nice, beautiful pond that's for wildlife. How about we plant a row of nice, beautiful pines, make it green, you know, keep Oakdale beautiful and kind of keep that eyesore away from our neighborhood? I mean, and there was a question last time was brought, do we use that area target? I couldn't believe how much we use Target. My kids actually use McDonald's. I actually been to Speedway for gas tickets. I can't believe twice last, not even a month, I had to go to Autozone. The kids use Penns and LA Fitness. So people are using that area. We want you to develop it as a business. We would like to have a restaurant or some more stores. It's nicer just to take a left, left, no streetlights, go into that area. It's convenient, it's close. So let's keep the area beautiful and let's somehow, let's start with the trees and kind of make a lot of neighbors happy at Annis Grove.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else that would like to make comments under open forum tonight?
Hello. John Grendelen with Twin Cities Towing, 2741 Geneva Avenue North.
You're welcome to extend or lift that microphone.
Perfect. Thanks. So I just wanted to, one, say thank you for the process. It's been a learning process on my end on this one. In general, I just wanted to follow up with the planning commission. I'd walked up, because one of the questions from our neighbors was, who is going to follow up with the resolution items? So one of the items is like a 10-foot wooden opaque fence. I had walked up and said, that would be me calling the contractor the day, either that night or the next day, once city council would approve it. So anything else on this list, my contact would be the one. So I would literally be there making sure if there was a problem, I would be the one trying to resolve whatever it is. So mainly, just wanted to use an opportunity to say thank you for letting me say that and if anything else, here for questions. Thanks.
Is there anyone else that would like to make comments under open forum tonight? Name and address for the record.
For sure. My name is Gabe Morecambe. I'm at 7833 31st Street, North in Oakdale. I wanted to voice on behalf of actually my son, who is a minor, who wasn't able to be here tonight, wanting to know what the protocol is in regards to being able to put up volleyball nets and staking. The signs that are posted out there talk about making sure that you have a permit to stake. And when they came in today to try to get that permit, that was not an option for them, they were told. And so when they went to go play in the park, they were actually asked to leave. And so trying to find a way for youth who are playing volleyball, which is actually really popular here in Oakdale and in our communities, ways that they can, again, they're staying out of trouble, doing beautiful things, playing and being athletic. How do we make that work for them? That's something that we worry about. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask just questions?
We're just gonna refer that to the city administrator to work with the park superintendent to identify spaces where it is allowed and wouldn't damage infrastructure like sprinklers. I think we can do that.
Yep.
Is there anybody else under open forum? All right, we're gonna move on to consensus motions. Tonight, we have A through H. Councilmembers, are there any that you would like to pull for individual consideration? I'd like to pull G, actually. Aside from that, are there any that councilmembers would like to pull? Can I get a motion to approve consensus motions A through F and H as presented?
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion a second, any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and those are approved. Item G is liquor license renewals. Chief Newton, can I borrow you for a moment? Step on up, I have a few questions. In the memo, there were a handful of violations identified, ranging in a couple of years, I see '22, 2023. Can you talk a little bit about that process? Not necessarily the process of compliance checks, but at what point does the police department change their recommendation to the city council for renewal? How many, how many compliance issues do you need? Is it within a certain timeframe? It looks like some of these have had a few issues over two-plus years. Can you talk to that a little bit?
Yes, so, you know, we get, the police department considers a number of factors. Let's say one of the biggest weighing factors for consideration is the business's response to that violation. If they are responsive to training their employees and want to improve by being compliant. However, as a police department, there are certain violations, whether it's the substance of that violation or if it's a number or it's continuing to happen and they're showing no improvement. Those are times where we make a recommendation for consideration for denial of that license.
And I assume since they're on the list, the police department feels like these infractions are manageable and they've taken steps to correct them?
Yes, we do. You know, some of these businesses, for example, the Olive Garden or Red Lobster, some of them are, is a chain business with some violations that have occurred. And our police department has reached out and spoke to management at those places to ensure that they're doing things right and being in compliance. However, future violations may lead to that recommendation of denial.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any other questions or any questions for Chief Newton? Okay. I'll go ahead and make motion to approve consensus. Motion G is presented. Can I have a second? Second. Any conversation? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that is approved. Thank you, chief. Next is an opportunity to check in with our advisory boards and commissions. In front of us, let me see, first one that met was planning commission. Councilmember Ingebretson is liaison.
I'm actually gonna defer back to you.
I covered that one for you.
I was out at the meeting. Mayor Zabel did cover for me, so.
I don't remember what they worked on. No, I take that back. They had a conditional use permit for a garage. They had, and one other item.
Butician.
Ah, yes. Home-based business, yes. Yes, and both of those were forwarded on with the planning commission's recommendation, so I assume those will be on our next agenda. Parks and Rec met February 20th. Councilmember Morecambe.
They did. I actually reported on this at the 27th meeting, but.
Have a 27th meeting. Remember that was the precinct caucuses?
That's right. Well, there you go.
We didn't get to have that meeting.
Well, report again. Jeez, yeah, you cancel a meeting, it's amazing what it does. But yeah, we had our dinner. But yeah, it was good, talking about upcoming projects for the parks. And something that's very exciting is right now, we're going through an update of our strategic plan for the parks. We've got some consultants coming in and actually just a few days ago, a survey was released for all the residents that I've been sharing myself, but city staff, Facebook page and all of Parks and Rec are encouraging everyone in the city to provide feedback on our parks. What do you like? What don't you like? What do you want to see? So that we can make sure we're thinking about the next 30, 40 years of what we want to have in our parks and accommodate the kids in these communities and the adults as well. So those are the focuses that we're working on and developing a work plan for the year.
That area is busy, that's for sure. Lots going on in the parks. That was it. So let's move on to a ward of bids. We have one tonight, Willowbrook Commons Park. Look at that, the name's perfect on there. Nailed it.
Thank you, mayor. Councilmembers, I do have a present, presentation here, and I'm Andrew Getzloff, community development director. Just the way. Is that a coincidence?
It's funny how things just work out.
Chris.
Okay. The award for Willowbrook Commons, Oakdale's newest park, which was recently decided upon a name, is on the agenda for tonight. Quickly on the background, there is a master development agreement with the developers that calls for the construction of three parks in Willowbrook by the city to coincide with development. Willowbrook Commons is the first of those parks. After, you know, a very long design engagement process, the city council did approve the final plans and specifications and advertisements for bids on January 9. Those bids were, were open from January 16 to February 6, and we had the bid opening on February 6. That bid advertisement included a base bid for the project and three alternative add-ons for that. One would be to include some water features in the form of misters, concrete pad and supply line. And the other two bids were for topsoil within, within the park area. Right now, it is lacking the appropriate topsoil and topsoil around the wetland complex, which is also lacking, and those were developer obligations to complete. We're very, we're very happy that we get such great competition on this project. We had eight contractors submit bids. Vite and Company was the lowest bidder for both the base contract and, and the, and the total contract amount. Vite's and Company's low base bid of $1,214,000 and change is underneath the engineer's estimate of $1,271,000. Adding alternative one, misters, would, would keep this within project budget. Adding alternative two and three would be completed by the general contractor, but like I said, invoice to Lennar Homes. We would need a budget amendment for accounting purposes to add alternative two and three. And that budget amendment would essentially increase the amount allocated in the CIP from $2,939,000 by approximately $81,000 to $3,020,000. When you add everything up for the park, when we were at the final design stage, we were about 10% overall contingency. Right now, heading into construction, we're at 6% contingency, which is a very healthy amount and in line with industry standards for, for the start. So with that, it is requested that council waive reading and adopt resolution 2024-24, awarding the bid for project 202304 Willowbrook Commons to Vite Company in an amount not exceeding $1,311,605.45. Also amending the project budget and authorizing the mayor and city administrator to sign and execute the contract. And with that, mayor and council, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmembers, any questions for our community development director? Did you have something? Oh, you opened your lips there, I thought you were gonna say so.
I'm just ready to.
He's ready to pounce on that resolution. Let's do it.
Make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution 2024-24, awarding the bid for city project P 2023-04 Willowbrook Commons Park to Vite and Company in the amount of $1,311,605.45, amending the project budget and authorizing the mayor and city administrator to sign and execute the contract with Vite and Company.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion a second, final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that bid is awarded. Thanks, Andy. Are you gonna take us through community development items?
I'll start you off.
All right, let's start with the staff reports. Go ahead.
All right. The, the next item, the next item in front of us is, let's see, the Willowbrook Open Space Contract Award for City Project 2023-06. And this is for, this project again is a requirement of the master plan unit development agreement, where the city is responsible for establishment of prairies within, within the open space. Though the city initiated a request for proposal process in, in the summer of 2023 and recommended selection of Res Great Lakes for phase one of that work. In September of last year, council approved the contract with Res for an amount not to exceed $98,240. And as part of that contract, Res is responsible for the design, installation and maintenance for three growing seasons, which is really the most intensive part of establishing a prairie. That would include 7.7 acres of open space and outlots G, B and C. The acres did not include any of the wetland or pond areas. So once we started the contract and Res became more familiar and us as city staff became more familiar with the restoration process, we're now recommending that we do pursue some wetland restoration in Outlot G. This would be additional 3.2 acres of wetland that was not in the, the original, the original contract. And wetland, and Outlot G is the, the outlot that surrounds Willowbrook Commons. So one of the, the more high-profile spots to do the restoration. Currently, the wetland is pretty low-quality, low diversity. It's dominated by reed, canary grass and dogbane. As Willowbrook continues to build, all the conditions will get wetter as more homes drain into the area and the environment will be conducive to dense stand, and could be conducive to dense stands of invasive cattails. So it is recommended that the enhancement and management work for those wetlands occurs now before those cattails can get established. And this will also make, you know, the prep work easier than postponing that into, into a later date. So with that, the amendment would increase RES's scope of work by $33,224 to $131,464 total. There is money within the 2024 capital improvement plan to accommodate that, that increase in spending, so no budget adjustments are recommended at this time. And with that, we're looking for approval of attention to the contract, and I'd be happy to answer any questions on this one as well.
Councilmembers, any questions for Mr. Getzloff? All right, let's jump right into the recommendation.
Make a motion to authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute the contract amendment between the city of Oakdale and RES Great Lakes LLC for project P 2023-06 for an amount not to exceed $33,224.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion a second, final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that contract amendment is approved. Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a conditional use permit amendment. City planner Luke McClanahan, welcome.
Thank you, mayor and council. Yes, recall that the Twin Cities Towing Conditional Use Permit Amendment request, and this is for property at 2741 Geneva Avenue, they are, the business is seeking to bring their business into compliance with zoning due to violations of their original special use permit from, which was awarded back in 1985. Just a summary of some of the issues here. Back in 2012, there was an expansion of the site without obtaining council approval. About a year ago, they also replaced their wooden fence with a chain link fence. The original special use permit required that a wooden fence be installed and maintained along their property. One other concern was that they have been exceeding their 30-car limit from their original special use permit. So that, the, the business is requesting to amend their permit to, in order to bring all those issues into compliance. So when the planning commission reviewed this request, they recommended approval back on January 4 of this year. Recall from the workshop discussion on February 13, the, the request was brought to, to again and further discussion was had. So based on that workshop discussion, staff amended the resolution that's in your packet to reflect concerns that were raised by the council. Staff recommends approval of this request subject to the conditions in the resolution. So going to the resolution in your packet, and that is 2024-15, I'll read through the six conditions of approval here. So the first one is that a, a 10-foot in height, 100% opaque wooden fence be installed and maintained along the entire southern boundary of the site where vehicles are stored. The applicant must obtain a fence permit through the city. Number two, expansion of the building property, outdoor vehicle storage area or use shall require approval of the site plan and conditional use permit amendment. Number three, no more than 70, 75 vehicles shall be stored outdoors at any given time. The number of vehicles may be temporarily exceeded if the vehicles are impounded during a city snow, emergency or other emergency event, upon approval by the city administrator or designated. Number four, a clear fire lane of at least 20 feet in width shall be maintained at all times around the building for the use. Number five, vehicles with leaking fluids or other hazardous substances shall be pumped of hazardous substances or be removed totally from the site. The city of Oakdale reserves the right to conduct periodic inspections of the site for leaking fluids and hazardous substances associated with vehicle storage. Finally, number six here is that the north entrance be utilized exclusively to enter and exit the business and nighttime operations be limited to the northern half of the site whenever possible during the hours of 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. And just to be clear on the proposed conditions here, they would essentially, approving the resolution would rescind the previous special use permit, those conditions, and replace them with the conditions that I just listed. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Councilmembers, any questions for Luke?
I have one regarding the fence. So if they choose, it's, from what I've seen, they're not using the entire property to store cars right now. They're only going a certain amount back, where if they, if they want to put cars further back on their property, the CUP would require them to extend the fence as well, correct?
That's correct, councilmember.
Okay.
And in addition to that, they would, the, the property owner would also have to go through a formal site plan and another conditional use permit amendment request.
Gotcha.
Mr. Mayor, mind if I ask Luke a question? Luke, how would, what was the process in which you, you came to the resolutions here? How did you come down to the 75 vehicles? Did you do a study and kind of determine that, hey, 75 is the appropriate amount? It's not too much, it's not too little? Can you talk through that process a little bit?
Yes, councilmember. So 75, the number that staff landed on for that is, we, we analyzed the site, it could, while maintaining a, a driveline and a fire lane around the building, we found that the site could easily accommodate well over 100 cars. So 75 feels like a compromise in terms of the original use permit was only for 30 vehicles and of course, the, the property or the business has, had expanded to include acreage to the north. So that 75 is, is a bit of a compromise between what's, what they could max out the property and what they were originally approved for.
Councilmember Willenbring.
Just have one question about the fuel tank coming into compliance. I understand there was not a permit pulled, is there one now?
Good question, councilmember. So the property owner removed that fuel tank, the 500-gallon fuel tank, and the fire marshal did confirm that that was removed back in February.
Excellent. Thank you.
Councilmembers, any other questions? In terms of process, I think there's possibly one amendment to one of the conditions. So I'm proposing we take the resolution as included in our packet. We'll do that in a second, and then we'll take the amendment after that, if that works for everybody. Yeah? Okay. So can I get a motion on this? This conditional use permit?
So make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution 2024-15, approving the conditional use permit amendment for Twin Cities Towing at 2741 and 2751 Geneva Ave. North, subject to the conditions in the attached resolution and the amendment that is, would be proposed.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion a second. I think we have one amendment.
I'm actually gonna propose two.
Okay, go for it.
The first one is under condition number six regarding the use of the entrance on the north end between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. I would like to eliminate the words "whenever possible."
Okay. So that new condition, if the amendment is adopted, would read, "The north entrance be utilized exclusively to enter and exit the business and nighttime operations be limited to the northern half of the site during the hours of 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM."
There's an amendment, is there a second?
Yep, and then.
We'll do one at a time.
Okay.
Yep. There's an amendment, is there a second? I'll second if nobody else will. Discussion.
You know, I would like to raise the question and ask, Luke, if we were to remove that phrase, how would it go about policing that? And then what kind of guarantees could we ask for from the business owner to make sure that doesn't get violated? And, and, and could there be instances where there's a mistake in understanding of, of what the, the CUP would clarify? So let's say a neighbor wrongfully makes, makes an accusation against a business saying, hey, they, they did use it, but then, and in fact, they didn't. How would we go about rectifying that and, and addressing, having such definitive language in there?
So councilmember, in terms of enforceability of this proposed condition, we're complaint based, and that's how we operate as staff. We respond to individual complaints and investigate it and make sure that it's a legitimate complaint. And in terms of, you know, the, how the business owner would ensure that this is enforced, you know, I, I think, I don't know that we would, as, as a city would want to, you know, get into too many specifics, but previously, they had mentioned, you know, some training of their employees in terms of utilizing that north access as one way. I don't know that I could speak to other provisions that the business might take.
Councilmember Herr, I would add, you know, as, as Luke said, we're complaint based, you know, and to the situation of a single infraction, you know, as is the case with anything in our city code, you know, obviously it would have to be a chronic recurrence where staff could document a recurring issue before the process would move forward. So a single occurrence really, you know, would exist outside of that. You know, I would, the comment I would make is, I, I do think councilmember Ingebretson's amendment is a good one because I do see some contradictory language in, in this condition when we use words like exclusively, but then in the next line saying "whenever possible", those have very different meanings for me. So I think this clarifies it to say, you know, we hear the concerns of, you know, adjacent residential property owners with, you know, being close to the residential properties late at night. You know, for clarity's sake, if we have to pick one, I would argue that exclusively is more appropriate.
And to piggyback off you a little bit, you know, about us being. Um, and to piggyback off you a little bit, you know, about the, us being complaint-based, City Minister Volkers, maybe you can, you know more about this than me, but we're gonna be rolling out an app very soon for our residents, where literally, you can just go on your phone and immediately lodge a complaint, and it tracks how the city responds and everything, correct?
Yes, councilmember Ingberthens, if I can do a infomercial for a second about that, I'd be glad to. Um, yes, in April, we're rolling it out to residents, called See Click Fix. It's an app on your phone, you can report anything you see or, or questions that you have. It will submit it to the proper department, and you can watch the tracking, and you will receive follow-up status, um, communications through the app on this, on what is going on with your complaint. So it's a much, much, much improved system over what we have. And that would be a great way to, unless it's an urgent matter, you don't want to use it for police matters that are urgent, but, um, that is a great way to report things and to track what happens. So yes, thank you.
Uh, councilors, councilmembers, we still have an amendment and a second on the floor. Um, is there any final comments? Okay, call the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Uh, nay.
Sounds like four to one, the amendment is adopted. Uh, councilmember Ingberthens, did you have another amendment?
Yeah, I would like to impose, uh, see a time limit imposed on when the fence is brought up to compliance with the CUP. And I guess I'm open to maybe a little discussion and debate as far as what that time period is, you know, you want to be reasonable, give them time, but, you know, we also don't want to see them kick the can down the road too far.
Okay. Do you have a timeframe in mind?
I, I, I thought by the end of the year would be more than enough.
I was gonna say thirty days.
No, I mean, and, and, yeah, I mean, but, but it ta- it takes, I mean, it takes time. And, you know, you don't know how far, uh, you know, the company is backed up, you know, I know.
So let's, let's do this, let's take the motion, I'll offer you a second, um, and then let, we'll go into conversation. Because my question for staff is, what would a typical timeline under code enforcement look like? I mean, I don't want to deviate too much from our standard process, you know? So in terms of compliance with CUP conditions, what is the planning department and code enforcement's expectation for compliance with conditions?
Uh, so Mr. Mayor, in terms of bringing or working with a, a business to be in compliance, for example, this situation, how long would we give them? We have to, it, I, it depends, right? It, it is kind of the answer. Number of factors, if, if, depending on the, the time of the year, obviously, we have a pretty mild winter right now, that it might be possible to, for them, for the business to, uh, act on it pretty quick. If they're showing good faith effort, that they're working towards, uh, progress, we can, we can be flexible, we can extend the time. Usually, something like this where, where it, it involves a, some type of construction, it could be June one or July, July one is usually when we give those dates out.
While I gave you your second, I would still probably vote no on it, simply because I think we're lacking in enforcement mechanism. So if we do apply a timeframe and say-
Well, I, I mean, I, I would throw, I would just say the entire CUP-
Is revoked automatically?
Absolutely.
Oof. I don't know, can we add that as a condition, or does it have to go through the process? I'm gonna look at the attorney.
Well, and that's, and that's why, and that's why I'm, and that's why I'm open to giving them plenty of time to, to make sure that it gets done. I mean, but what I, what I, what I, what I want to avoid here is, you know, getting a call from a resident, and one that's probably in the audience here, nine months from now, yeah, they still haven't done anything with the fence. It's still, I mean, and, and in full disclosure, I've visited, uh, both, both couples that were here and stood out on their decks. To call the, the fence they have now even opaque is, I mean, it's, it's a chain link fence with some cover on it, but it's, it's not, it's not working to, to stop any type of lighter noise.
So knowing that staff's timeline would be faster than your proposed timeline, are you comfortable leaving it in operations to work through?
Sure, okay, I, I, I-
Would you withdraw your amendment?
I, I'll, I'll withdraw, that's, that's fine, yeah.
Councilmembers, are there any other amendments? I'm gonna offer one. Uh, amending condition three, striking the number seventy-five and inserting the number sixty. I think, um, the original CUP being for thirty, more than doubling it, and the impacts on the adjacent residential neighborhood is more than excessive and, uh, too big of an ask, um, for our residential neighbors to, to accept. Um, I, I don't think it's right to just more than double the impact of this business on their residential properties. And so I think we should temper that. So I, I would offer the amendment changing it to sixty, is there a second? All right, amendment fails. Uh, we're back to the resolution as amended, twenty-two-four dash one-five. Are there any other amendments? All right, final comments. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No. Um, and that conditional use permit is approved four to one. Willowbrook tenth edition, who wants to take that one? Luke?
Yes.
Keep it rolling.
Yes, this is the latest phase of the Willowbrook build-out. Um, this particular phase is located on the north side of Fortieth Street, further builds out the Willowbrook neighborhood with more single-family lots. Uh, the plat is, uh, proposing eighty-five single-family lots and eight, or excuse me, twelve outlots for wetland, stormwater, open space, future park, and a future development set aside. So in total, this plat would, uh, uh, subdivide seventy acres. And, uh, because the property is a budding ideal avenue, that's of County Highway, Washington County, they did review the plat, there was no comments from the county on this one. Staff finds that the plat is in compliance with the preliminary plat of Willowbrook, the subdivision regulations of the city's ordinance, and the Willowbrook planned unit development. I will run through just a handful of conditions here for the final plat resolution, and this is resolution number twenty-two-four dash twenty-five. So the first condition of approval is execution of a development agreement between the developer and the city. Number two, approval of the public improvement construction plans by the city engineer. Number three, permits and approvals must be obtained from outside agencies and approval, or proof of approvals must be provided to the city. Number four, satisfaction of park dedication requirements in accordance with the Willowbrook master planned unit development agreement and a fee of thirty-five thousand, six-hundred-and-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. Number five, the final plat must be revised as necessary to meet all requirements of the city attorney's plat opinion, and the buyer slash developer shall further adhere to all recommendations of the city attorney regarding title matters and recording instructions for instruments associated with development. And finally, number six, outlots A through K shall be dedicated to the city. I'd be happy to answer any questions about this plat.
Councilmembers, any questions for Luke? It's hard to believe we're up to the tenth edition.
That was my only question, is this the last planned edition?
No, councilmember, so there, within this plat, there's one outlot that will, uh, i- is being set aside for, uh, approximately thirty-seven more single-family lots, so we'll see at least one more phase of the single-family development. And then there's the parcel that's north of the rower's site, which is, um, designated for multifamily, so at least two more phases yet to come.
Thank you. We're getting there. Last call for questions, I'll look for motion.
Make a motion to waive reading and adopt Resolution twenty-two-four dash two-five, approving the final plat for Willowbrook tenth edition with conditions included in the attached resolution.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, final comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And that is platted. Thanks, Luke. Uh, next up, check in with engineering, Jesse, come on down.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, so tonight is the next step in the long process for our twenty-twenty-four street improvement project. Tonight also includes our Oakdale Park Trail project and the nature preserve, and standalone fire station parking lot, uh, reconstruction at our north fire station. So pursuant to prior council authorization, uh, plans and specifications have been completed for this, uh, for these projects. Uh, Brad Swanson, representing S E H, our design consultant, is here tonight. It's requested that the council are considering approving these plans and, uh, authorizing the advertisement for bids on these projects. Um, the plans were prepared, uh, in accordance with, uh, the improvements discussed at the public improvement hearing and reflected in the feasibility report. But at a high level, it involves reconstruction of pavements, trail improvements, street lighting, uh, utility repairs, drainage improvements, uh, trail improvements in the nature preserve, and then, uh, parking lot improvements at the north fire station. Uh, the street project, uh, generally is Hadley between Fortieth and Fortieth Street, and, uh, some of the local streets off of Hadley in that area. And then, uh, with the trail project in the nature preserve and the fire department just off of Fortieth Street, it's one nice contiguous proj- project area. Uh, these are being combined into one contract that, if approved tonight, will be advertised, um, and which will set this project, uh, up for a very favorable bidding timeline of April, um, which would keep the project at or ahead of schedule for construction to start in May. All these improvements were reflected in the adopted twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-eight, uh, CIP, um, and discussed at previous workshops. My request is that the council waive the reading and adopt resolution approving the plans and specifications for the aforementioned projects. With that, if there's any questions, that's what I'm here for.
Councilmembers, are there any questions for Jesse?
Just real quick, you know, this has been brought up before, but, uh, I know they're gonna be redoing Fortieth Street there with the county, and there's been conversations about some better lighting at that intersection due to number of, uh, traffic incidents. With this project going at the same time, I assume you've been in con- conversations with Washington County about the timing of these projects?
Uh, councilmember Morecambe, uh, Mayor and Council, um, so the county project doesn't include lighting improvements. Um, we do have street lighting on Fortieth Street, it's just the old style. This would have been an opportune time, um, it would have been a considerable expense to the city, um, so that isn't something that we've, uh, partnered with the county on. But most of these light poles are, we have existing foundations, so those are collector styles, so they would use the existing foundations and we'd install the new light standard. So if you drive up and down Hadley and then onto Fortieth Street, it is, right now, a schmores board of old styles mixed in with the new, and as we're reconstructing, we've upgraded ours, um, but we didn't take that opportunity with the county's project here.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, any other questions? I'll look for motion.
Make a motion to waive reading and adopt Resolution twenty-two-four dash two-seven, approving plans and specifications for city project R twenty-two-four dash zero-one, street reconstruction, city project P two-zero-two-three dash zero-three, Oakdale Park Trail improvements, city project B twenty-two-four dash zero-two, north fire station parking lot improvements, and authorizing the advertisement for all, for and collection of bids.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, final comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And those plans and specifications are approved. Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
Uh, next, let's check in with our city attorney, joining us tonight, Rachel, welcome.
I'm just here to say good evening, and I hope you had a lovely day.
Thank you, any questions for Rachel? All right, let's turn the other way and check in with our city administrator, Ms. Volkers.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. I just have one thing, um, it is, um, our, our Public Works manager's last, um, meeting. Um, Jim Romanek, who's in the back here, we have a, um, a going-away party for him tomorrow. His last day will might be Monday, the eighteenth, and I just want to take a second to acknowledge his many, many years of work for the city and, um, all his contributions. So he's been here thirty-eight years, three years, uh, the first three years were as a seasonal employee in the parks and the street maintenance area. In nineteen ninety-eight, he was hired full-time, permanent. He worked as a crew member for a while in many, many years, and he was then promoted to street and fleet superintendent, where he had great success doing that. He did that for eighteen years, and as such, in January of twenty-two, I asked him if he would like to be the Public Works manager. Uh, we had a vacancy, the long, long-term Public Works Director retired, and he agreed to do that and took on that role, and he's, he has done, um, great things for the city over the years, he's, the total is thirty-eight years, as I said. He has been our, um, really our informal leader in Public Works, whether he was in a leadership position or not. Everybody saw Jim and respected Jim as one of the leaders, and then when he did end upholding that top post, it was such an easy transition, and an appreciate, appreciated transition to have him there, so, um, I just wanted to show recognition and appreciation for his many, many years. We'll do a lot more of that tomorrow at the party, but I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention, today's his last meeting, and he will be greatly missed when he retires on Monday, the eighteenth.
Thanks, Chris. And Jim, everybody on council will be sharing Chris's comments, you know, um, it is never easy for any city seeing such a, a breadth of knowledge and experience walking out the door, but we're all so excited for you. It's hard to believe, I mean, thirty-eight years, just how this community has changed and how you've been an integral part in all of it. Um, we say thank you for your contributions, but more importantly, we say thank you for building such a wonderful team at Public Works that, um, their experience and commitment to the city will, will continue on. So we wish you well in retirement, um, if you ever want to come back and visit, feel free, door's always open.
And Jim, just to let you know, I was in first grade when you started at City of Oakdale.
I wasn't even alive, so.
Dude, I was not alive at all.
No.
And if I could say something too, right? It's, um, being on the council, right? I just finished my first year, um, but the amount of pride that goes into how you take care of our city and the staff that are a part of it, um, you go a few miles over the, the roads, right? And you're in East St. Paul, where I lived for a number of years, and I don't envy that Public Works Department and the infrastructure they've got to maintain, but the second you cross over into Oakdale, you can see the difference.
You know it.
And that's the, that's what you've created here, and it's something that we're proud of, I know, as a council, and it's not an easy thing to accomplish, so, thank you.
Uh, let's move into council presentations. Uh, councilmembers, I have a few tonight, but is there anybody that would like to go first? Anything down here? How about down here? All right, uh, let's just dive right in. Uh, councilmember Morecambe alluded to this earlier, um, in January, Oakdale kicked off a park system plan update. Uh, it is off and running now, and we are ready to start layering, layering in, uh, resident feedback on our city parks. So we encourage everybody to take a few minutes, fill out the short online survey, um, with information about park amenities you use, amenities you wish to see, and barriers in our park system that you encounter. Um, you can find that survey and a really cool G I S map on our city website, oakdalemn.gov, and we'll keep that, um, survey open until April fifth. Uh, our final, that can't be right, our final indoor market already?
Mm-hmm.
Wow! Uh, final indoor market of the season will be held Saturday, March twenty-third, from nine AM to one PM at the Discovery Center. A great opportunity to shop local, I went last weekend, got some smoked pork chops, got some strudels, some salsa, there's so much going on up there, oh, and some delicious carvals. So, um, definitely, uh, join us on March twenty-third up at the Discovery Center, nine AM to one PM, um, a lot of great vendors up there. Uh, the city's Business Retention, Expansion, and Attraction Program, also known as BRIA, is back for twenty-twenty-four. Recently, um, the city had two great visits, one with home furniture and another with all-family dental. Through this program, city officials, staff, and chamber reps, uh, visit local businesses to learn more about how the city can support them and enhance the business climate in Oakdale. Uh, this is the second year of, of that program, it's been a huge success. I think last year, we hit eighteen businesses in our community, this year, we're slating for twelve, fifteen, yeah. I know we have a couple of visits, visits coming up yet this month and early next month, so, um, we are off and running. We appreciate the partnership with the Oakdale Area Chamber Commerce and the St. Paul Area Chamber of Commerce on that program. Finally, city's hiring, uh, it's time to start hiring some seasonal positions. We are looking for seasonal outdoor maintenance workers to help keep Oakdale beautiful. Applicants must be eighteen years or older, um, and the salary starts at sixteen dollars per hour. We're also hiring summer recreation program instructor, uh, instructors. Um, those applicants must be sixteen or older, and the salary is sixteen dollars per hour. You can find these and all of our open positions on our city website, oakdalemn.gov. We gotta pay some bills. Uh, we have two claims rosters in front of us, we'll take them one by one. Uh, first up is February fourteenth, uh, through February twenty-seventh, in the amount of one-point-eight million and change. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve claims as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, final comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And those are paid. Next up, we have a claims roster, February twenty-eighth through March twelfth, in the amount of one-point-three million and change. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve those claims as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, motion, a second, final comments? Oh, that's not, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And those bills are paid as well. Uh, next, uh, this is where our agenda's gonna get a little choppy, so anybody that so anybody that's watching at home may be wondering what we're doing. We have one more item on our regular, regular council meeting agenda. It's a closed session with our city administrator for an annual performance review. We don't do closed sessions very often, but it's an opportunity prescribed in state law when council can meet behind closed doors for very specific reasons. Performance reviews is one, talking legal strategy with our attorney is another. We don't do it very often, but sometimes there are times when council needs to discuss things privately. So we will be tackling that. Before we get to that, we're gonna tackle some of the other things, such as we have a meeting of our Economic Development Authority. So we're gonna go ahead and recess this meeting. We'll tackle the E D A stuff, and then we'll go into closed sessions. So after the E D A meeting, the video feed will turn off and we'll just continue our work. So, councilmembers, I'll look for a motion to recess the city council meeting in order to convene a meeting of the Oakdale Economic Development Authority.
I'll make a motion to recess the city council meeting in order to convene a meeting of the E D A.
And there's a motion, is there a second?
Not good.
Motion, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And the Oakdale City Council meeting is recessed. We're gonna go ahead and call to order a meeting, a regular meeting of March twelfth, twenty twenty-four of the Oakdale Economic Development Authority. Sarah, will you take the roll?
Commissioner Herr.
Here.
Commissioner Ingberthson.
Here.
Commissioner Morecambe.
Here.
Commissioner Willenbring.
Here.
President Zabel.
Here. First up on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Councilmembers, no changes in front of us, so can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Everybody, I love it.
Everybody doing it.
Motion, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And the agenda is adopted. We have one set of minutes in front of us from our last meeting dated August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Councilmembers, any changes or corrections? Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the August twenty, August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three meeting.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And those minutes are approved. We have one business matter in front of us, it's the annual election of officers. Under the bylaws of the E D A, the role of president's automatically filled by the mayor of Oakdale. But we do need officers or commissioners appointed for the roles of vice president, treasurer, secretary, and commissioner. Councilmembers, does anybody want to change, or do we want to just keep the roster the same as twenty twenty-three?
The same.
Same.
All right. Will somebody make a motion designating or extending the roles of twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four?
I'll make a motion to extend the roles of the twenty twenty-three Oakdale Economic Development Authority roster officers into twenty twenty-four.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, any conversation? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And congrats on all those appointments. Okay, I gotta go to my script here, gotta make sure I don't mess this up, or Chris is gonna get really mad at me. So at this point, we're gonna go ahead and go into a closed session of the Oakdale Economic Development Authority. So pursuant to Minnesota State Statute, section thirteen D dot zero five, subdivision three C three, the meeting will be closed to discuss offers and counteroffers for the purchase or sale of real property with PIN ID three one zero two nine two, nine two one, three two zero zero five nine. Oh, good gosh. PIN three one zero two nine two one three two zero zero six zero, and PIN number three one zero two nine two one three two zero zero six one, in the city of Oakdale, Minnesota. I made that motion, can I get a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And the Oakdale Economic Development Authority is going into closed session.